Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming to our meeting tonight. Before our meeting begins, we have an invocation offered by Commissioner Brady, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Today, oh God, we ask for your spirit to be at work in our midst, that you might stir up in us the gifts that we need to lead this city with integrity and focus on the task at hand. Give us the courage to consider all those who are affected by the decisions that we make. Help us to remember those who labor on our behalf, our employees and our vendors, and all those whose livelihood is connected to the city of Sandusky.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Poehl?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here. Commissioners, we have before you the minutes of our meeting of July 23, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to wait seven minutes for the July 23 meeting and dispensing formal reading.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion. Lot of objection. Motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to presentation that John Hildebrandt... You know, I'm going to go a little bit out of order, hold off the street. But we are honored to have with us tonight two of the trustees and the administrator for our neighbors to the south, Perkins Township, and they have made the sojourn over here to make a presentation. And gentlemen, if you like to go to the podium or do as you wish. Thank you so much for being here. It's a delight to see all of you in our chambers.
Well, we appreciate you having us here, and we'd like to thank Kelly for... We had a little snafu on our part. We give some guys vacations sometimes. So, but really appreciate it, Kelly. And Mr. Coleman sends his apology. He's on vacation this week, so he wasn't able to attend. But he graciously signed this proclamation also, and he'd like to extend his best wishes to the city of Sandusky. But on behalf of Perkins Township Proclamation to the City of Sandusky on the occasion of its 200th bicentennial anniversary, whereas in 1818, the city of Sandusky was founded on the shores of Lake Erie and is what's now called the Sandusky Bay, and whereas the city is home to a rich history, including a diverse immigration population, involvement in the underground railroad, and a lengthy history in manufacturing businesses, and whereas the city of Sandusky sits as the county seat of Erie County and is home of approximately 25,000 citizens, and whereas the city of Sandusky has achieved a significant milestone by reaching its bicentennial in 2018, celebrating through various community events and celebrations throughout the city, and whereas the city has started the movement of revitalization in its downtown corridor, which will allow the city to thrive and grow for the next 200 years. Whereas the city of Sandusky and Perkins Township have and will continue to share a common past and future interest, and whereas the 200 years of shared boundaries has allowed the city of Sandusky and Perkins Township to cooperate in numerous ways to better serve our community through mutual aid and in collaboration, and whereas both Sandusky and Perkins share the desire for our communities and our region to flourish, and now therefore, on this 13th of August 2018, we, the Perkins Township trustee, on behalf of the residents of Perkins Township, recognize and celebrate the bicentennial of our neighboring community in which the city of Sandusky another prosperous 200 years.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
I don't know if many of you have ventured down Route 250, but there is a nice happy birthday card on our billboard out there. And so, we'll have someone... We'll have sent to Eric, and he can distribute it to how it looked and that stuff.
Well, we... I mean, this is one of the... Believe it or not, some people won't, but your coming here is very touching to me, and I think it's one of the highlights of the year. You know, there wasn't too long ago... It wasn't too long ago that we didn't have the best of relationships, and I'm so appreciative of the fact that all that's changed. It's changed because we've all tried to work together, and just like you said, Mr. Farrell, we recognize our common interests today and tomorrow. You know, I'm looking at you gentlemen up there, and you've all had a long history with the city of Sandusky as a distinguished firefighter, as a planner, and as our former chief. Mr. Lang, thank you so much for being here and for honoring us in this way.
Thank you, and congratulations very much. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah. Would you give that to her?
Okay. All excepted for the... On behalf of the commission.
I'll send it to Kelly.
I'll accept it on behalf of this. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have Mr. Pascolini here. He's got to get to the airport. He just wanted to say thank you for Gardland. They have him sitting right out here.
Oh, okay.
Could he do that real quick?
Sure.
I told him you... That would be fine. Jump up and...
Well, Mr. Hildebrandt, we will get to you in just a moment. Sorry.
Good afternoon. Nick Pascolini from Gardland, 527 Gardland Avenue. My reason for being here tonight is I want to thank the city for our beautiful new street. It's not a landscape yet. I want to thank Jane and Megan and Ed for all of their good times, and I hope that the city awards underground utilities more work in the city because they were fabulous. They were out of the world.
Thank you, Mr. Pascolini.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your coming tonight. And I guess you have a plane to catch, so...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Waddington said you had a plane to catch, so safe travels.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Hildebrandt, with no further ado. Now, folks, John Hildebrandt is taking to the podium right now, and he's part of the Erie County Historical Society, longtime general manager of Cedar Point, so he knows our community well, and he is an historian. It says on the agenda tonight that he's going to present the history of Sandusky, but I think it's probably not so sweeping as that. But you had a... Not the entire history at any rate. We don't... I'm looking at you thinking maybe you are going to present the entire...
Close enough. Close enough.
But you presented this at the bicentennial... Or the Fourth of July celebration, Stars and Trips. I missed it. I heard about it from many people, and I appreciate your coming tonight to give us an iteration of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It's a great pleasure to be here this afternoon. Yeah, we were asked to do different presentations during the July 4 event at Washington Park. A bunch of us local historians, and I grabbed the 10 most significant events in the history of Sandusky, Ohio. And the red wagon is not one of them. This is beloved. Didn't make the top 10. Couple of caveats before I really get into it. This is an arbitrary list, this top 10. This is Hildebrandt's list. I did vet it with some of my local historian buddies, but essentially it's mine, so it's very subjective. It's roughly chronological, but there's some overlap. I defined events pretty broadly, as you'll see. The 10 events are not compared to each other. In other words, the first one I show is not number one, and the 10th one is not number 10. That's a subject for a different presentation, I think. It was a lot of fun to do. The first one is the cholera epidemics. 1849, 1850, 1852. We're reminded that just last week, we rededicated the cemetery at Harrison Street. And I think that says it all right there, that so many years later, we're still involved with the effects of that terrible time in Sandusky. Half the city fled for their lives, over 400 dead over the period of the epidemics. It was a terrible thing, and it's great that we still pay tribute to the victims of the epidemic. And the fact we do such a great job restoring the grounds, they look great, and the city is to be committed for that, certainly. Number two, 1838. Erie County is created from Huron County. Sandusky is named the county seat. Back when Ohio became a state, there was no Erie County. There was just Huron County. And then in the 1830s, they decided to break it up into two parcels. There were two competitors, really, Sandusky and Huron. They were similar sized in those years. There were three commissioners appointed to look at the whole situation, make a recommendation. And the word was that they were leaning toward Huron. Then one fateful day, they were in Huron to investigate something. It was in the summertime. There was a tremendous thunderstorm out on the lake. It was flooding in the Huron River. They were actually marooned on a parcel of land for about six or seven hours, these two commissioners. Meanwhile, in Sandusky, Sandusky Bay provided refuge for three or four ships at least from the storm and came out as the hero. And the story is that sort of leaned things towards Sandusky's way. As we know, Sandusky ended up being named the county seat. So for all this time, we benefited from that. And you can imagine Sandusky would be a very different place if Huron was the county seat. We would not have had the growth, obviously, and the legal center, the courthouse, all those things that have accrued in Sandusky. So it was a big event. This is a picture of the courthouse about 1875. I think it looked better then, actually, than it does now, but I'm old fashioned when it comes to architecture. Number three was 1899. George Beckling gains control of Cedar Point. Hotel Breakers, Coliseum, and Electric Midway follow. Most of you are probably pretty aware of Mr. Beckling. He was an Indiana guy, came here as a salesman, looking for a place for train excursions, somehow maneuvered himself into getting control of the ownership of Cedar Point in 1899. What had been a local resort, he transformed into a regional destination, even a national destination. A man of brilliance, foresight, guts, determination, classic entrepreneur. He ran the park until he died in 1931. But obviously, it had a great effect on Sandusky. And, you know, human beings make a difference. History is alive. It's all about the... History is really the study of people. If he hadn't come here, maybe nobody else would have. We just don't know, but we're glad that he did. Number four, 1890 to 1970, which admittedly is a big era, but I call it the era of the big box manufacturer. Sandusky was proud home to companies like Hinden Dows, Scott Paper, American Crayon, New Departure High, General Motors, Ford, Chrysler. Those were the glory years of manufacturing in the city, and obviously had a tremendous impact. That picture on the right was taken of New Departure about 1960. And the picture on the left, it's kind of interesting, Hinden Dow Building, as you can tell, OSHA's not been around in a while, while sitting on the windowsills and doing rather death-defying acts there, if you ask me. 1924, number five, the tornado that devastated Sandusky. Not often thought about today, but it killed 90-some people, wiped out 150 homes, 25 businesses. It was a tremendous, tremendous event in the history. Obviously, no one would like to dwell on it. The city made a great recovery from it, but the National Guard there, you see on the right-hand picture there, were brought in to help restore... Provide sustenance for folks, to help with the cleanup and restoration of the city. Number six, 1960. George Rus and Amela Gross announced plans to invest 16 million in Cedar Point and create the Disneyland of the Midwest. It kind of took off, picked up where Mr. Beckling had left off. And again, it's a familiar story. By the late 50s, Cedar Point was sort of downtrodden, had been for 20, 30 years. These two gentlemen, one from Toledo, one from Cleveland, wanted to buy the property and raise everything to the ground, turn it into a housing project. But the city didn't like it, the county didn't like it, the residents didn't like it, the state didn't like it. They were the only ones who liked it. So they kind of had to punt for a couple of years and decide what to do. They hired a consulting firm out of California, people who had done work for Disney, which of course had just started and were just starting to get big, and said, "Take a look at this, see whether it's worthwhile investing, doing something else." They came back and said, "Yes. Get the baby boom going. You've got better transportation. The economy is growing. People are looking for recreation. Put money into it as an amusement park, take some chapters from the Disney book, and you might have something." So they took that report to the bank and borrowed $16 million, which in 1960 was a lot of money. Still is, of course, but it was really a lot of money then. And that really transformed... The legacy of Cedar Point today really goes back to those two gentlemen. Really, what was going down this way, suddenly it went back up that one. Big event for the city, obviously. On the right there is this Blue Streak, famous Blue Streak. Who knows when the Blue Streak opened? What?
1965?
Four. Close. Very close. That's George Rus on the left, and I had a... Really had a tough time finding a picture of Amela Gross. But he's the second man on the left on the grand opening of the Town Hall Museum there back in 1970. 1977, the Sandusky Mall opens. Many of us can remember that. US 250 Development takes off, thanks to road widening and sewers, which make it all possible. And certainly, downtown Sandusky has kind of lost its retail mojo, as I say, out to the township. There's a picture of the Sears store, which of course has gone from the mall today. Number eight, 2000. Farlands Acquires Providence. Three hospitals are now one. A big event, a significant event in the city's history, where we now have one strong regional entity for health care. That's a big event. Three great traditions that have come together to make that happen. Number nine, 2005, Kalahari opens. Indoor water parks created second season. Again, located in Huron Township for the most part, but the economic impact certainly fell in Sandusky in many ways, both in terms of job opportunities and spending and overall. You know, Sandusky's really been on the map there in a way that's brand new. Number 10, 2014. Sandusky residents pass income and admission tax increases, partnered with Cedar Fair, Bowling Green, others, in the new kind of downtown development. I really think that if you... 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, you'd be able to point back to those two votes as being really the way the city was kick-started to what we're seeing today. That was a big event. Here's five that contended if it didn't make it. Some of you may think these should be on top of that. In 1888, the Ohio Veterans Home opened. That's been, from many points of view, a steady economic impact on the community for now over a century. 1919, the 1931 prohibition comes to Sandusky. We're a community that had a lot of employment in the beer business and the wine business, took a huge adjustment. 1967, Farlands College opens. So Sandusky folks now had a junior college they could attend. Big event, big opportunity for the city. 1937, Mosley Channel opens. Not as well-known, but allowed the continued development of Sandusky as a coal port. That was a big deal. Took a long time to get done, and we still benefit from that today. Then in 1957, the Sandusky Plaza opens. I think a lot of us can remember that. That was quite the big deal at the time. There's an ad there promoting it. That made a big difference, I think, in the city and everything that's going on today. And I want to just acknowledge the Sandusky Library Archival Research Center for some of the photographs I've used and the Sandusky History Blogspot. One last thing. We had a meeting of the Historical Society the other day, and we were talking about all the events that are taking place in the city and environs and have to do with the bicentennial and other things. So it's a great time to be... If you're a local history person, it's a great time to be around. Events and happenings and going out all the time, it's a great opportunity. And the city to be committed for the role they've played, I think, as an amateur historian, I really enjoyed and appreciated that.
Thank you, Mr. Hildebrandt, for the presentation. I want to thank you also for speaking at the Cholera Cemetery Rededication last week. I know many folks listened to that with great interest. I was not able to be there, and I really appreciate your coming tonight because I want to also use this as kind of a plug to the community. Some folks don't really know much about our history. We're all busy doing what we do every day, but the Erie County Historical Society has a lot of information, just a treasure trove of information on its website, including self-guided walking tours. And I know you and other members of the society have been very helpful, really instrumental in putting on the bicentennial banner, banter, over the course of the last year and making sure that that history comes alive.
Appreciate that, Tom. It's been great. It's not over yet.
Thank you. Okay. We have now a proclamation that Commissioner Twine is going to present.
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. Every year about this time, we do a proclamation related to drive sober or get pulled over, just reminding everybody not to drive under the influence. Whereas from August 15 through September 3, law enforcement nationwide will be joining the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in the high-visibility Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Crackdown Campaign. And whereas the crackdown will include high-visibility enforcement throughout Sandusky and will run from August 15 through September 3, 2018, and whereas officers in the Sandusky Police Department will be aggressively looking for drunk drivers during the crackdown and will arrest anyone caught driving drunk. And whereas although it is illegal in all 50 states, the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico to drive drunk or having a blood alcohol concentration of .08 or higher. Far too many people across the nation get behind the wheel after consuming too much alcohol. And whereas every year, more than one-third or 38% of all motor vehicle traffic deaths involve drivers who are drunk, and holidays such as Labor Day are particularly dangerous. And whereas drunk driving takes a particularly heavy toll among young drivers. And whereas research has shown that high-visibility enforcement, like the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Campaign, reduces drunk driving fatalities by as much as 20%, and by joining this nationwide effort, Sandusky's roadways will be made safer for everyone throughout the Labor Day period. And whereas the Sandusky Police Department wants to remind everyone that getting behind the wheel drunk is a terrible idea as it impairs your ability to operate a vehicle safely, impairs your judgment and good sense about whether you can or should drive. And whereas being arrested for driving drunk brings a wide range of negative consequences into one's life, such as jail time, loss of driver license, and steep financial consequences such as higher insurance rates, attorney fees, court costs, lost time at work, and the potential loss of one's job, along with tremendous personal embarrassment. And whereas driving drunk is simply not worth the risk. Therefore, the Sandusky City Commission hereby proclaims and announces August 16, 2018, through September 3, 2018, as Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over 2018 Crackdown Weeks in the city of Sandusky, and urge all citizens to drive sober or get pulled over while traveling on our roadways, dated this 13th day of August 2018.
Thank you, Commissioner Twine. All right. We have another piece of legislation, and we need to make some time for audience participation. Is there anyone who should address the commission on any of the items of regular business on our agenda? If so, please step to the microphone, give us your name, address, and your thoughts, please.
I'm Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I see that you're putting in a school driveway tonight. You're going to pass that. I have two questions on that. Is that going to be one-way in and out from Fifth Street onto Arthur? Or is it going to be... Are they going to use it for both one-way in and out? Or are they going to exit somewhere else for the buses? Also, when you do this driveway from Fifth Street, does it go to the school property or do we go past the school property to do that? I think we just stay on city property and let the school finish the driveway or whatever. I don't know what you're doing there. These school plans keep changing around. I can't keep up with it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else? If not, then we have several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
I'll move.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion. Lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We have four items on the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to place any of those instead on the regular agenda? If not, then Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is for acquisition of five parcels through the Land Utilization Program. Item B is a purchase and sale agreement through the Land Utilization Program. Item C is a purchase and sale agreement through the Land Utilization Program through the Mo2Own Program. And item D is a grant application ratification to the National Recreation and Parks Association for J.C. Park Green Infrastructure Project.
Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions A through D, as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through D, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the resolutions and ordinances, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Those resolutions and ordinances are adopted. Would you present item number one, please, Mrs. Cresser?
Yes, item number one is a resolution authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $12,500 through the Housing Development and Beautification Grant Program to Connor and Brandy Whelan in relation to the property located at 906 Central Avenue, and declaring that this ordinance shall take... I'm sorry, resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Boddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Boddington?
I think this is great that we can use this money out of the Neighborhood Initiative Fund. The needed upgrades, when reading through this, is a little bit over $100,000 in estimated repairs. I know Mr. Whelan well, and they've done a lot of good work there over the years, and that's a neighborhood that does need some... I don't want to lose that central neighborhood, so I fully support those.
Additional questions or comments? Are there some additional material that's being passed out about... Pictures, I should say. Beautiful home. Are the Whelans here?
Whelan.
Whelans? I'm sorry. Excuse me. I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. We have not met before. I understand that you had a disaster with frozen pipes.
Yep.
Was that...
Frozen pipes back in February.
Okay. But you've put a lot of money in. Yeah, okay.
Making some upgrades to Sanders. I'm sure I did the outside when they went there, bought it back in 2003 to 2007. I guess we've been overdue for some upgrades inside. Have to be done now.
Nature forced it on you, so thank you for your investment in the city. Commissioners, additional questions or comments?
Beautiful, beautiful home.
Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city managers to approve the second change order for work to be performed by Edward Do and Company of Sandusky, Ohio, for the demolition and asbestos abatement of the former American Crayon Facility project in the amount of $19,846, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion. Mr. Lasko, would you take a minute to just outline the needs for the changes that are being made and...
Yes, Mr. President, members of the commission. As noted, this is the second change order. The first change order that was brought to commission was merely a time extension just due to weather problems in the spring. This change order includes three items. One is a extension again to time to move the substantial completion to September 30th. It was the same contractor on this job that was frantically but wonderfully completing Campbell Street, so that took him a little bit of time to move onto Campbell Street. But secondarily and economically, there's two elements of this, one being an increase to the contract of $10,676 for the installation of all of the tonnage, 356 tons of stone that we saw brought into the west side of the property to help with retention issues and stabilization issues, given the extreme grade issues on the west side of the property. And then secondarily, what we uncovered is a severely cracked sanitary line that heads out to Rockwell across the property. So this would also include the repair and replacement of 262 feet of sanitary line across the property. All told, the economic increase would be $19,846, which is a 3.5% increase over the base contract. Although, we expect this to be the final change order, I didn't want to mention it as a final change order because we do have some underground excavation to do with the sanitary line. So I just want to be cognizant that there's a slight chance something could be found, but Ed knows his work really well, so we're confident in his cost to get this done.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lasko. Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Mr. Lasko, now we are certain that this is a clean site. This is a clean site environmentally for the next tenant.
Yes, through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Brady. Prior to our acquisition, we did both a Phase 1, but then we also did a very extensive Phase 2 environmental assessment, which got into groundwater assessments and soil assessments. So this site is developable to a commercial standard. It was basically very close to being developable to a residential standard, but for all intents and purposes, anything commercially can be done on the site, and we did that prior to our ownership.
Truly shovel-ready at this point.
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Mr. Lasko, did the demolition contract include seeding? I think it did.
Yes. So what we will do, Mr. President, is with all of our contracts, we'll always hold back 10% retainage on the contract until we're assured that the site has fully grown in. I know, what I will say is, once the contractor laid the initial seed, I believe we had a storm that evening, which washed out a good majority of it. So we will retain, again, 10% of that contract until the site has fully grown in.
I did have a constituent question about that, so thank you. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady. Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a John Deere 25 cubic yard leaf collector from ARM OpCo Incorporated, doing business as the American Road Machinery Company of Canton, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Water Distribution Division and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I'm thrilled that... I know it's a big investment, but hopefully it'll get the leaves off and resolve some of our problems, as far as getting them off in a speedier fashion reading through this. And it helps reduce the waste generated in panel covers and stuff around town. That's a big thing that we need to look at, too.
Mr. Klein, do you have anything to add? I mean, this piece of machinery was purchased while I was in high school, so I think we've gotten our money's worth out of it. We want to replace it.
For the leaf collection, yeah, the existing equipment is really old. It's not in really good shape.
You really have a bound-to-dry sense of humor, but go ahead, Mr. Klein. Dig the hole a little deeper.
So what I'd say is, five years ago when I got here, we actually considered abandoning the leaf collection program and looking at other options, and I was told pretty much immediately to stop even looking down there.
Yeah.
So now, five years later that we have some money, it's how do we make it more efficient? How do we make it so that it's better for the residents? How do we make it so that it's better for the sewer system, for the streets, for everything else? And last year, with the oversight from Scott Cromer and Dave Borsec, they came up with a plan and they rented a piece of equipment and for very minimal cost, almost even borrowing the equipment. It was very similar to the piece that's being purchased tonight. And that piece of equipment, along with good weather and the program that they set up and the communication that they had with the residents and that the residents had with them and with our office, Elizabeth and our office, it was... It ran very smoothly last year and we got very few complaints. And a lot of that, again, has to do with the residents' understanding and communicating with us as well. But this piece of equipment, it provides flexibility for the staff. We're still gonna have that other piece of equipment, but that's gonna be mothballed since it was purchased in 1978. So this is gonna save a lot on staff hours, staff time, and be a lot more efficient for everybody as we move forward with the leaf collection program.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, additional questions or comments?
Just, Mr. Chairman.
First of all.
This one. What does this do different than the last one? How's it actually saving money?
The last one, we have to mount equipment on the back of vehicles. We have to transfer the equipment. And when the salt truck, when the salt boxes are on it, we have to take those salt boxes off. This one, we have a dedicated truck for it now, so there's a lot more efficiency with the transfer. The unit can reach into the yards a lot better, can reach between the vehicles a lot better, although we still request that people don't park in the street in front of the leaves. It picks it up when they're frozen onto the ground. It helps a lot with pretty much everything. It's a lot better unit than what we had in the past.
Does this require less manpower with the vehicle?
The vehicle requires less manpower?
No, no, I mean in terms of the process. Normally, it's three guys on a rake, a dump truck, and a dumpster trying to scoop this stuff up. Are we...
What I'll say is the vehicle requires less manpower, but we're not gonna give it less... We're not gonna give the program less manpower. We're still gonna put the same amount of personnel towards it.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. I will be interested to see what puns Mr. Oriol comes up with on that one. I'm sure we'll see something. Would you present item four, please, Mrs. Cresser?
Yes, item four is an ordinance declaring a 1991 John Deere backhoe as unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the city charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2018 John Deere 324K four-wheel-drive loader from Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company of Brunswick, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Sewer Maintenance Division and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the... I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to expend funds for the purchase of a Mr. Manhole Gold Series Six-Shooter Manhole Leveling System and Accessories from Crytex LLC of Delphus, Ohio, in the amount of $23,998.85 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I'd like to have someone explain to me when I was reading this. It says, "In the process of developing a valve-turning program..." I got that part, but then it says it's required by the Ohio EPA. Could somebody explain that a little further?
Mr. Klein, maybe you could answer Mr. Waddington's questions and then give us an overview of... I mean, because it really sounds pretty funny, a Mr. Manhole Series Six-Shooter Package. Maybe you could explain this a little bit better, please?
Yes. For the valve-turning program, what the city's gonna be required to do through Ohio EPA is develop a program where all of our water valves, that you operate them on a regular basis. Every three, five, seven years, you have to operate those valves. So what happens is because we haven't operated them for so long, we're expecting many of them to blow and to break. So that's gonna cause the manholes and valve boxes and things like that to need to be replaced. So the Ohio EPA portion is for the valve-turning program, not the piece of equipment that we would be purchasing. But the equipment that we're purchasing would be, it's called a Mr. Manhole. Right now, what crews do to adjust manholes to grade to avoid the bumps, they're supposed to be about a quarter inch below the surface of the pavement. Right now, they get a saw and they cut a square around the manhole or the valve box, and they get a jackhammer and jackhammer it out, and then they clean that out, and then they come back with concrete and pour that or asphalt. What this is, it's like a big saw that's a circular... Not a circular saw, a hole saw, that just goes around the manhole, drills down, comes up, and then they can pull it out and then just start working on it right there. This piece of equipment is... It goes from having a four-man crew working for three hours per manhole or valve box to a three-man crew for one hour. So you're going from 12 labor hours down to three per manhole. And with all of our street resurfacing that we're doing in-house right now, we're adjusting all those in-house, this is gonna save a lot of time for our sewer and water guys, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Can we, for this year or the use of this or a year's worth, get some data kept shows how much man-hours we save, how many manholes we did, the time and hours that justifies this?
Would you circle back to us and... I'm sorry, years' time?
Yeah, well, it's whatever. It's six months if you want. I don't know. It's probably seasonal when you use it, so just so we can show the public that this is... That it works.
Yeah, and to that point, I can certainly do that. But it'll vary because a street like that Sanford Curve didn't have any manholes, but when you do one block of Hancock, you might have five or six. So it's gonna vary based on the streets. Now, the first year that we adjusted manholes, we ended up paying a contractor just under $10,000 to do that year's worth of street resurfacing, but we'll keep track for the next year or two.
We can compare and contrast what you do this year with next year, the number of manholes. We can look at it. Just something that gives us an idea that we're making good choices.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the purchase and installation of audio and video equipment from Torrance Sound Equipment Company of Perrysburg, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for the City Hall Audio/Video Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just wanted to generally hear what we're gonna have, compare and contrast what I have now, what are the improvements gonna be?
Mr. Hamilton, since this is your communication and you're moving to the podium, I'm assuming that you have the ability to answer Mr. Poole's questions.
We'd be right through you, Commission President. This agenda item is to outfit the new city hall, the commission chamber, the main staff conference room, and the two everyday staff conference rooms with audio/video equipment. The commission chamber itself will have the same functionality we have now. We will reuse all the equipment from here, but we'll also add the ability to do video conferencing online. The other three conference rooms are start from scratch. We currently have no ability to do any of that stuff, so the main conference room, the third and fourth floor, will be built from scratch. So the only thing we're leaving here is the cables and the wall and the manpower that it took to put those cables in. Everything else, we need to upgrade some of this equipment to make it function. And the new space is bigger, it's a different shape, so it's gonna take some tweaking.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
When I was reading through this, it's part of the lease agreement between the city and Sandusky City LLC related to relocation of the new city hall, certain expenses remain the financial and logistical responsibility of the city. So is there gonna be more to this from what I've read in here?
For this project that's on this agenda item, no, this will be it. As far as a bigger city hall project goes, then there will be other things coming.
Okay. And the lease at the end of the seven years, if the lease, we can pull that stuff out, say if we didn't stay there for whatever reason?
Yeah. It will be designed the same way as this place is, that we can pick up and move.
Because I know it was an agreement, lease agreement, that we signed with them, so correct?
Yeah.
I shouldn't read all this. That's why I get up early.
I don't... I'm not gonna sleep, Mr. Waddington. Well, as outlined in the communication that Mr. Hamilton provided to us, there will be additional parts and pieces coming over the course of the next couple of months. And just to read from your communication, Mr. Hamilton, data, information, technology, AV and security systems, exterior and interior wayfinding signage, and some new furniture, along with moving services.
Correct.
Okay. We can anticipate those over the course of the next couple of months, is my understanding.
Probably the next month, you'll see most of them coming through.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I should have a general question, since you know about presentation materials. Do people no longer use laser pointers?
No, because they don't work on LED devices.
They don't work?
No.
What do we change them with? When we have presentations, it just bugs me that you can't point to what they're talking about.
Yeah, you can get specialized ones that will work, but TVs, you need a reflective surface, LEDs will not.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Mr. President.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Mrs. Cresser, would you present our last item, number seven, please?
Yes, item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds to the Sandusky City School District in the amount of $75,000 for improvements to the Arthur Street right-of-way for bus access drive at Ontario School, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
That's a tie. Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'd ask Mr. Klein to share with us the configuration of this route, and tell us if it's one-way or two-way, and the real benefit to that, as we spoke today, I'd like you to share with the rest of the commission and the audience.
Mr. Klein.
Mr. President, when the project started over at Ontario School, there were a lot of discussion about traffic. The city was very concerned, as were the schools, about the congestion that was going to be on Ontario and in the neighborhood between Third and Fifth in particular. So we came up with the idea with the schools of having an outlet on Fifth Street off to the east end of the building. The original configurations were to bring bus traffic from Ontario to the north side of the building, take them off onto Arthur, and it changed over and over and over, as Mrs. Johnson alluded to. But when they bid the project out, there were, the city needed to make sure that this happened, and the state was telling the school, we don't want to spend money within the right-of-way. So the city was very concerned about this portion of the project being eliminated, so we wanted to make sure that we did what was right, so that's why the $75,000 would be in there. It's for a dedicated driveway for the school. And the intention, now, the current design of this is for bus traffic to use this into the rear of the school and to exit from this driveway. The pickup and drop-off for the parents, for the students, would be in the Ontario section. So the cars, the vehicles, the residential portion would be on the west side of the building, and my understanding in the most recent conversations is all bus traffic would become entering and exiting two-way from Fifth Street to the rear of the school.
Mr. Klein.
Through the Commission President, to the commission, I know Aaron mentioned this in light of the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative, this project, as you remember, each neighborhood that was selected as part of the Neighborhood Initiative had an anchor project, some of those were city projects, other of those were things that were just happening in the vicinity. Ontario School was always the anchor for this neighborhood in its selection, but ultimately we know that a large, sort of citywide, school in a pretty tightly compact residential neighborhood was the challenge, and so really, and Aaron said this, but working with residents and the schools, et cetera, this is an opportunity for this neighborhood to get the benefit of the school, but potentially to bring in some of that traffic from the rear so that it doesn't overwhelm the neighborhood, to drop off and pick off. As a parent of a kid at Osborne, you can see when that neighborhood has an hour each day where it's really complicated. Hopefully, we can get all the benefits of having a great school in the neighborhood, but mitigate some of those drawbacks, as Director Klein explained.
And the other question that was asked?
Mr. Chairman. There is electronic gates, correct? Did you mention it? That's what I've read, unless I've read the wrong packet, or I didn't hear any mention of it. Said, what I got here, access would be controlled by electronic gates, allow buses access, drop-off, pickup, eliminate the conflicts with personal vehicles. I didn't like that. I'd just like to have some clarification.
The other question that was asked, Mr. Klein, is whether there's a clear limit between where our money is spent on the right-of-way and the rest of the cost of that driveway? Could you address that?
Yes, Mr. President, the hard money would be within the right-of-way, and again, this is a designated drive entrance, it's not going to be considered a road, it's not going to be considered a public, it's going to be in the right-of-way, but it's going to be more of a drive apron than a roadway. But our portion would only be spent off of private school property. I would defer to Angie for the electronic gate question.
Through you, Mr. President, yes, the last set of plans that I saw that were approved would be utilizing signage at the street, but would have an electronic gate on their property up closer to where the parking is. So there would be signage so residents knew not to go in that driveway, and we are also working with the police department in regard to maybe when school starts up, letting, just having somebody out there letting them know. So that's been discussed, and then there would be electronic gate which would be on the property, not on Arthur Street.
So, as, I think everyone is aware, well, first of all, we are in a white-hot economy in terms of construction costs. Some costs are just really going through the roof, and the schools have run into that recently, and was announced a couple of weeks to, maybe even two months ago now, the schools have gone back to the drawing board to look at some different designs and some ways to save some costs. And I guess what I'm looking for is, I don't see in this legislation necessarily, maybe it's there, I'm just missing it, a way to make sure that if they proceed in a manner that doesn't include this driveway in order to cut down costs, that this doesn't just go into something else. Do we have that assurance in here someplace, Mr. Hayburger?
Yes, I mean, this is required just, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. President.
Please.
This is required just for the access drive, bus drive, so they couldn't, our legislation itself was closed out under Section 1 there, so if they try to use it for anything else, we could sue them, or actually, we probably won't even pay them until we got the invoice that this was done, is how I assume it would go down.
I see, okay, is that consistent with your understanding? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
At the east, at the east end of that drive where it intersects with Arthur Street, where the school property starts, I think there needs to be a gate of some sort, whether it's electric or manual, that they take off when they use it or not, but traffic coming off Arthur Street, going behind those houses, is not good for the neighborhood. So I'm not, when I listen to you, it sounds like they're taking care of their parking lot with a gate, but it leaves all our citizens with traffic going behind their house, and then driving across the grass around the gate down by the, I just don't want, that will be a place where people come after dark and whatever, become a nuisance to people who live on Fifth Street, if they have access from Arthur Street.
So...
I need that to be addressed, I'd like to have that addressed somehow.
Can you clarify your concern?
My concern is that it becomes public, it becomes an access behind those people's homes. Off of Fifth Street, which I think it should not be, it shouldn't be that way, if you're not going to gate it at Arthur, at the right-of-way and the school property.
I thought, I thought that was the plan, to gate it at the street, no?
She said, I'm not sure, did I misunderstood, stand you, am I right?
Right, yeah, through you, Mr. President, we've had, we had a lengthy discussion at Planning Commission, and Mr. Hayburger was at that meeting as well, but we talked about the option of gating Arthur Street, and the fact that it's a right-of-way, was determined that you could not block off the access, so it was determined to use the signage, and then to use the gate at the property line off of Arthur Street, entering into the backside.
When you described it, I thought you meant up at the school parking lot, that's what you said.
No, I'm sorry, I miscommunicated that, but it would be off of Arthur, though.
Thank you, that's fine, no, it's fine, no. I just meant at that end, so that there wasn't traffic coming off of Fifth Street, onto Arthur, and then going behind those houses, so that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you originally said the parking lot, I was like...
Sorry for the confusion.
No problem.
Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and that concludes our regular items of business, and we turn it over to you, Mr. Webster, for the city manager's report.
Thanks, commissioners. Hold on one sec. Good evening, commissioners, audience, staff, I'll start with the donations. First, a $50 donation to the Mills Creek Golf Course from the Salloway family in memory of William Emmett Stahl. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Then a motion in second, discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved, with our thanks, Hank.
A $100 donation to the Sandusky Fire Department was received from James and Martha Pitcher as a thank you for installing smoke detectors in their home. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Motion in second. Question. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved, again with our thanks. Nice gesture.
Moving on to administration, just an update that our new website, which we've been working on for a long time, will be live this evening. This is phase one, and is the actual website itself, the information portion, along with utility billing. We will keep adding additional features throughout the rest of this year. Please let Kelly Cresser at 419-627-5850, or Leslie Messenberg at 419-627-5844 know if you find any problems or have any comments, we can address them. We'd also like to thank Kelly and Leslie for their hard work and commitment to this project, without which this would not have been possible. I also want to thank Stuart, who shepherded this as well, and it has been a really collaborative effort because of those three's leadership and pulling in the other departments and getting information, and having had a chance to look at some of the baseline of this before it went live, it's going, I think it'll be a much more attractive, cleaner, and easier to use website, so we look forward to people accessing it over the next few days and getting it, any wrinkles out over the short term. Also, the Bicentennial Banter History Series, which is one of those events that Mr. Hildebrandt mentioned tonight, is really pulling people together and having a wealth of historical things at people's disposal this year, resumes this Wednesday with an award ceremony presented by the NAACP called Sandusky Firsts, recognizing black residents who are the first in the Sandusky community. The award ceremony begins this Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the Sandusky State Theater, and we hope to see many people there. Also, we're very excited for the Bicentennial, that Founder's Weekend will take place this weekend. August 18th at 10:00 AM, a parade will begin at Strobel Field, and we'll go down Hayes Avenue and Columbus Avenue and ends downtown. I believe it was on the front page of the Register today, and so you can also go to sanduskyregister.com or Facebook for the city's page and find more information. And also, August 19th at 7:00 PM, the Fire and Symphony Orchestra will provide a free concert at the Sandusky Bay Pavilion that will end with the firework show, which is also free, so we hope to see as many people Sunday evening as possible, and that should be a really special evening to commemorate our 200-year-old history. And again, I want to thank Mackenzie Spriggs, our Bicentennial Coordinator, as well as everyone in the Bicentennial Commission, and a lot of people who've worked really hard on this event, from the Fire and Symphony Orchestra to Steve Ernst, who's been volunteer chair and is doing the fireworks, it'll be, and the Rotary Club and Maris Brunner in particular have been really, really helpful in pulling all that together, and it should be a really special event. Let's hope for good weather this weekend, hopefully we get last weekend's weather this weekend. Moving on to the police, SPD recently participated in the community events, including the Sandusky City Schools, Back-to-School Rally, as well as Walk a Mile in Herschews. SPD passed out bicentennial owls and eagles during the fifth annual Touch Truck event, and I can attest that those were a big hit, with at least two of the 800 children who attended the event, so thank you guys for that, and Touch Truck was another great year. Also with fire, Sandusky Fire has been awarded a BWC firefighter exposure, environmental elements grant in the amount of $7,680. This will be used to buy all firefighters a pair of Honeywell super gloves and Inetex gray particulate hoods, so thank you, Chief Wilcox, for making that possible. Also, Sandusky Fire was awarded an EMS grant in the amount of $3,575 from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. Moving on to IT, IT will release an RFP for printers and copier replacements and support contracts throughout the city. The intent is to keep most of the printers we currently own, except for the main centralized copiers which require replacement. Also Tiffany Taylor, our GIS analyst, has been asked to be a part of the Ask the Experts panel, as well as to be a contributing voice to the discussion-style workshop at the 2018 Ohio GIS Conference. In this workshop, representatives from Ohio cities and organizations will present and discuss how they will utilize GIS and ask questions of their peers. This will primarily be an opportunity in which the spotlight, in which two spotlight successes in Sandusky and showcase us as a GIS pioneer and leader in Erie County. It's an impressive achievement, given her short tenure with the city, and shows that she's demonstrated agility and understanding of complex technology, and it's great to see something that we weren't even doing a few years ago, that we're already being recognized, somebody who's kind of setting the pace, particularly for smaller cities. And actually, I was talking to Tiffany about this, and she said the fact that we have adopted GIS at a slightly later date than some other larger communities has allowed us to start with sort of newer best practices and technologies, so that a lot of other people made heavy investments that they're trying to turn, you know, it's sometimes hard to turn away slowly from some of those things, and so we're coming in at the cutting edge, right at the time that we're starting, which is pretty exciting. Moving on to Public Works, EcoTree Services, a contractor for the 2018 Tree Program, has begun to mobilize for tree and stump removals. Affected property owners will be notified as the schedule is established. Also, an update on the greenhouse sign, which I know has come up in this meeting before, Friends of the Greenhouse will be applying for a grant in the amount of $2,231.67 from the Erie County Community Foundation, to be applied toward the purchase of a steel and limestone sign for the city greenhouse lawn. Funds would be used to supplement any additional costs, so it would otherwise be covered directly by the Friends of the Greenhouse and the city of Sandusky. Do I need a motion for that one, or no? No? Okay, just an update, all right. Moving on to the Planning Department, the regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled Wednesday, August 22nd at 4:30 PM in the commission chambers. Also, the regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 16th at 4:30 PM in the commission chambers. A landmark commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 15th at 4:30 PM in the commission chambers, and a historic tax credit workshop will be given by Designing Local for property owners with buildings that are historically listed. This is open to the public and will be held at Boomtown Coffee on August 28th from 12:30 PM to 2:00 PM. Again, that'll take place at Boomtown Coffee on August 28th from 12:30 PM to 2:00 PM. And then finally, just a reminder that we have a cleanup this Saturday at 9:00 AM at Churchwell Park in the South Side neighborhood. I want to thank all those who are involved, and Talon wanted me to let folks know that anyone who shows up will be finished in time to also attend the Bicentennial Parade, so that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager? And we turn now to old business. Anyone have any items of old business? Any items of new business? Mr. Waddington?
Just like to thank our Fire Chief Wilcox and Police Chief Orzak for being out in the public, that's nice, I haven't seen that in the past years, but to see both you guys out at a lot of these public events, like Lion's Park last week, and different events throughout the community, I think that's neat that we got two of our safety top folks attending these events.
I just appreciate it very much, thank you. Additional questions or comments, or other items of old or new business? Mr. Hayburger, I noted in the paper yesterday, or the day before, I don't remember, was the Plain Dealer, or the Toledo Blade, but the Toledo Blade had, I'm sorry, the City of Toledo joined the lawsuit, so-called Lake Erie lawsuit, that's in front of Judge Carr in federal court in Toledo, that's, Judge Carr is pressing the Ohio EPA to take additional steps to protect Lake Erie, and I wonder if you could, with Mr. Webster's direction, of course, since you report to him, take a look at the ability of the city to perhaps intervene in that litigation as well, and at least express our voice, because the health of Lake Erie is a big part of our local economy, and I think that we, if we have the ability to weigh in, and the commission supports that, I think we'd like to be able to consider that.
Through you, Commissioner President, Mr. Webster has already asked me to reach out, I've reached out and replayed phone tag with the attorneys, so...
Okay, all right, good, one step ahead of us, thank you. Any other items of old or new business? And we will turn to audience participation, anyone wishing to address the commission, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I need to request a public hearing, that, so I need a motion to schedule a public hearing for September 24th to consider an application to amend the zoning map for parcel owned by Larry and Angel Cunningham located on Putnam Street. Would someone care to make a motion to set that hearing?
Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, and the hearing is set, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
Are we gonna, I thought Mrs. Cresser was going to do her...
Ms. Twine let me know that she was unable to complete that before our meeting, so we will be looking at that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Skated by another night. Now, public discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Going back on the agenda based on some comments that were made this evening, item number D, Item number D, which is the J.C. Park, is that going to be all of J.C. Park, including Whiteman Weber, or is that going to be the J.C. Park, would that be south? Does it include the entire complex for that grant?
I did not understand it to be differentiated. Mr. Klein, can you answer that question? No, it's not differentiated. It's the entire park.
Because the entire, okay. The other question would be item number two, which is the former American Cran property. I think it was stated that the site is now commercial standard ready. Does that knock the thought of putting the police and the judges' complex on that site, since that's not technically commercial, since it will be residentially, not residentially used, but will be used by the public?
It is my understanding that that would be eligible to be cited there, given that level of cleanup, yes.
Okay, very good. And the last question is on the Arthur Street access, bus access. Are there plans to put in a privacy fence between either household on both sides of Arthur Street to control noise from buses and pollution, air pollution, whatever? Is there other plans for that?
I don't know the answer to that question, Mr. Klein. Do you know? Or Ms. Wattington?
Mr. President, I know that at least the property right to the left of Arthur Street, there is to be some privacy fencing that the school was going to work with the property owner on. But I'd be happy to look up, look at the plans to see if there's any other fencing.
Okay, no, you know, since the plans changed so much, I didn't know if that was still part of.
I can pull those out tomorrow for you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission on any city-related items?
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I would like to talk about the $500,000 TIF grant that was given to a developer at the last meeting. I know that was a letter of intention, and I've seen other letters of intention that had a lot of things, a lot of description in the letter of intention. I looked all over to see what exactly this money was going to cover, and I couldn't find anything but a one-liner that said incentive grant program for tenants looking to rent, but no description. We just gave out a half a million dollars to a developer, and we don't get any description? The public doesn't? So I tried to look around, and I found a reliable source online that told me what was going to happen with this. Looks like the game plan is to spend $450,000 on discounted rent for the developers' tenants. In the first year, three-fourths tenants' rent will be discounted. Second year, a half of the rent will be discounted. And the third year, a fourth of the rent will be discounted. So this is a three-year plan, and I guess there's five agencies who are going to review the applicants for this. The lucky applicants will get a discount, a heavy discount. And the remaining $50,000 of the $500,000 said it was going to the developers' charity. I don't even know if that's legal. I don't know if this is true. This is what I'm seeing online, and I was wondering if the city would like to add anything on this, because I think there's a lot of money to discount off rent.
Mrs. Johnson, we had quite a lengthy discussion about this at the last commission meeting. I don't recall.
But we didn't have any figures. You didn't shoot out any figures or anything like that. No details.
The $500,000 was discussed, and I don't know where this, I don't know what the source is for that information, that part of that money is going to a charity. I've never heard any such thing. But at the time, Mr. Webster went through it in some detail.
Well, to give out $500,000 and not have a description, and all you have is on the city documents, incentive grant program for tenants looking to rent space. How so? What is the game plan on this? And this should have been made public. That's a lot of rent to discount, just to hand over $500,000 to a developer on a sentence of incentive grant program for tenants looking to rent space. That's not transparency.
We did provide detail, but it was at the last meeting, so. I understand your concerns. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Good evening, or yeah, good evening. My name is Shamika.
It's not morning yet.
Well, 6:15, yeah, we're there. My name is Shamika Owens. I am a resident here in Sandusky, born and raised, left in 1998 to 2001 to go to school, been here ever since. There are some concerns that my family and I have that I have been dealing with, or shall I say, we now have been dealing with for the past maybe two, going on two and a half years. If I did have permission, I would like to come to the front to present you guys the folders that I will be reading out of. I just put something together real quick, because I know it's a five-minute limit.
Sure, yeah. Do you have something you'd like to pass out?
Yes.
Okay, we could probably give it to Mr. Lockhart, and we'll pass it down.
So there's a total of, I count, 16 things that unfortunately we have been dealing with for these years. So you guys, hopefully you don't get tired of me, but you should be seeing me at the next meetings for maybe here to Christmas. We'd probably be bringing Christmas presents. But the very first thing is, I reached out to you guys January 13th of 2017 in regards to some issues that I was going through. I can honestly say that Ms. Twine, she was there, and she spoke with me, along with Mr. Poole. He came to a housing meeting, so that was going on with that. But the first thing that I gave was that first letter to show that I have contacted you. The reason why I'm here today is, the first issue I'll start, is my husband, his name is Jamar Owens. He also is born and raised here in Sandusky, left in 1994 to 98 to serve in the Marine Corps, been back ever since here. We've been married now going on four or five years and have a 17-year-old son. The stuff that we've been going through has even trickled down to my son as far as harassment and unfair treatment. On the second page that I gave you is a contractor registration form. My husband is licensed through, he was licensed through the city. I believe he still is, but around May or June, his name was taken off of the list. He's licensed through the state of Ohio and also through the WSOS as a contractor, also as a lead and a status worker. We put in for a registration for him to be registered here for sidewalk, house moving, and I believe it was two more things. Went down to Hafner Insurance, grabbed the policy like the description gives, and we received this letter that you guys are looking at on July 5th, basically denying him for I then called in, and I tried to speak with Mr. Matt Lasko, but he's always on the run. He was busy. He did contact me a couple of days later, and I voiced my concern to him, you know, through email and everything, and so he wanted Mr. Scott Tom to get back in touch with us. Well, where the issue come down at is at 937 West Washington Street, which I'll present next time I'm here. A stop work order was placed on that property on June 26th of 2018. And Mr. Scott Tom said that is the reason why Jamar was denied license, because he did work on it after July 26, 2018, which is not true. For some reason, God gave me the gift of discernment to know that something like this was going to happen, therefore I took pictures beforehand, which is your fourth page, July 25th. So how my Android is set up, you basically have to touch the screen in order to get the detail, time that we took the picture, along with the date, and I'm more than happy to present that to you guys. After I voiced the concern and told Mr. Scott Tom that that was not true, et cetera, et cetera, he then stopped contact with me, therefore I reached Mr. Lasko. Mr. Lasko told me that he stood behind Scott Tom's decision, I guess before Mr. Harris left and everything. This was something that they had already discussed. So then I asked Mr. Lasko if I could come in to present other documentation that I have to prove that this is not true, instead of just being based on what Mr. Tom said. And unfortunately, to this date, I haven't got a return on that. So why I'm here today is to ask if we could have a meeting, if not one, if not all of the commissioners could be there, along with my husband and I and Mr. Lasko, so that we can show that no rules or no laws or no ordinance was broken, so that he can retain the registration and the license that he deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. I appreciate your being here tonight. I'm sorry for the obvious frustration that you feel. We are not an adjudicated body, so we don't pass judgment on these things, but I can assure you that you've secured our attention, and we will have a discussion with members of the staff and Mr. Webster, and seek to get a better understanding. This is the first time, I think this is the first time I'm becoming aware of this, so I don't think I saw that I was on any of your emails, and I don't recall this issue before, but.
No, sir.
Okay, well, very good. Thank you. And if you'd give us a chance to dig into it a little bit, to understand it from the staff's perspective, you have one perspective, the staff has a different perspective, and you can understand that our interests are to protect both the residents and also support the staff, because ultimately, that's how the work gets done, that we want done, that all of us want done in the city.
Absolutely.
So thank you for your presentation tonight, and I can assure you that I will talk to Mr. Webster and Mr. Lasko and try to get some better understanding.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before she leaves.
Mr. Poole.
Before she leaves. Just a question. Do you have the surety bond?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, that's fine. Because that's what, just really quickly. The purpose that you're coming here today is that you're intending to restore or repair the things that are needed? Is that why you wanted to arrange this meeting? I mean, or is there something that's delaying this?
Well, that goes into the second part, which I'll probably see you guys on the next part, when you guys' next meeting, because it was a five-minute frame. But yes, I'm just trying to put it in numerical order to get to everything at the end. I just thought it was important to bring this issue first.
But essentially, you're seeking the staff's help or our help to complete the process of restoring or doing the repairs that you need? Is that the gist of it?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I just want to be able to show my phone and show the proof of the dates that show that he did not break the rules. He's not really a speaker, but he even, you know, said the worst thing ever is not doing something and somebody's blaming you for doing it. So I'm his voice for this evening.
Ms. Owens, if I may ask, it might be more helpful if we could see everything that you had, instead of laying it out over the course of the couple, next couple of meetings, because if I talk to Mr. Webster, and he talks to Mr. Lasko, and we think we understand what the issue is, and then two months, or two weeks later, you present additional thoughts and some documents, evidence, then I don't think that helps us very much to be able to do it piecemeal like that. My email is on the website. You're welcome to send me an email with all that you have, copy of the commissioners, however you like, but I think it would be more, we would be in a position to, we would be in a better position to help you if we had everything, so that we could understand it all at once.
Okay, Mr. President. The reason why I didn't submit everything at once, is like I said, it goes into different things. As far as with this issue, that was everything that you have now. The other stuff that we went through was, I was charged with two felonies, and with the help of God and Mr. Jim Murray, I was able to get that dismissed. That's another thing I want to talk to you about. Another thing, my son was involved in the automobile accident at the age of 16. He hit two gentlemen from the back. He was assaulted by those two gentlemen. No charges or anything was brought against him, but against those two gentlemen, but I was told that if they charged the two gentlemen, then my son would also be charged, and he has no record or anything. So that got pushed under the rug. It's just different, different things, but if you would like, I will send everything at you at one time.
Yeah, I'm going to have to back off. I didn't realize one of my partners represented you.
Yes.
So I, yeah. You could send it to Mr. Brady. It's more up his alley.
My email's on that website also. I'll be glad to look at it in total. If you'll give me that, I'll get with all the parties involved, and we'll get your answers for you.
Does it matter that I used to rent from you my first apartment? No, I'm just kidding. Okay. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Tell me any money.
No, 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 no.
I certainly don't have a conflict.
I didn't do no damages, no, not cleaned up. I still got the video. No, thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owens. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? If not, then, oh, all right.
Good evening. My name is Joan Chaney Burton, and I live at 2024 Foxborough Circle at the Corazón Place, Yellerman Run Apartments, that I came and complained about before. This is a different issue. This is gang stalking, and I don't know, I don't know if any of you know about gang stalking in a community?
I bet the chief does, but I don't.
Okay. Gang stalking usually takes a community, and they target certain people, usually involved with people's assets, people with money, and they usually want that money, and they want that money very, very badly. So it takes family, friends, community, associates, what have you, they'll use to get to that person. And eventually, the outcome really is their life. Okay? So in this community, I don't know if it's happening, but we like to put a stop to it in case it is happening, because I could be an executive director coming to you to complain about someone. That isn't true. But because I'm an executive director, or a commissioner, or a mayor, or an elder in a congregation, you would believe me. Why wouldn't you? Because their credentials supposed to speak for themselves, okay? I'm a nurse, disabled, getting ready to go back to work, found out that there are people working under my nursing license without credentials. So that comes back on me. So I go to HR and say, can you give me my W-2 form for my taxes? They said, well, here. I said, I've never lived in Lorraine. I never lived in Michigan. I never lived in Indiana. I live here in Sandusky, Ohio, where there are other people who are using my nursing license. I'm in the process of getting my bachelor's degree. I don't need anyone else gang stalking me for my credentials, just to say, hey, we got a bachelor's degree, let's go work, blah, blah, blah. I don't need that on my record. I don't need that in my life, really. Providence School of Nursing was very good to me and helped me to be the best nurse that I can be. Even though I got on academic probation, they helped me get into HOVIE. I graduated as an LPN and went back, kept going to school, going to school for my bachelor's degree. It wasn't easy, because I was a single mom taking care of two boys. I don't need the community and my family or Deuces or anybody else gang stalking me for my credentials. It means a lot to me, because I love people. I have taken care of some very prominent people in this area, in this community. I don't want a nurse without credentials taking care of someone at risking of their life. That shouldn't happen in this day and age. We need to get into the bottom of the establishment checking nursing license, and not just saying, well, you have the license, this is blah, blah, blah's number. Go and work for them. Go and work under their number. Go and work under their, you know, and then flashback is silence her to keep her from working. I don't need that. I don't need to be gang stalked in the community. I just need to work as a law-abiding citizen like I've been on my life.
So the situation you're describing is very concerning, because obviously, it hurts your reputation and your ability to earn a living, but it also puts patients, any one of us could be a patient at the hospital, at risk. Have you, and this is a very serious crime that you're describing.
I just found out about it.
Have you reported it to?
I have contacted the Labor Department, and the only reason why I found out about it was I was doing my taxes.
Well, I'm looking at, oh, Ms. Twine.
Have you contacted the Ohio Department of Health, where the Board of Nursing?
Yes, they are aware, and my license is on an alarm.
I'm sorry, your license?
It's on an alarm. It's on an alert system. If it's not me, they cannot work under it, but if you don't report it, how do they know?
We really don't have any authority over that.
No, 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 I'm not saying that you do. I'm just making you aware, because it could be your loved one with someone working in a facility. I'm a rehire at the Erie County Care Facility. I'm a rehire at the OVH. Okay? But if you got money and can pay the money, you're going to let that person work under whoever's license they want.
Chief, if I may ask?
That's dangerous to the people and to the residents of the facility.
Chief, or Mr. Heiburger, who has jurisdiction over this, if this crime is occurring in our community? Is that not something the SPD has authority over?
We could do it if it is happening here, but the way she's describing it's in other states, so.
Oh, I see.
It would have to be when the jurisdiction.
Yeah, I have to, I have to go to Columbus and to the board and stay there for a while just to get everything cleaned up, and my license, I want to keep it on alert for the sake of the safety of residents and of the community, you know, of the community, at the hospitals and everything, but I'm just saying, in this day and age, it shouldn't be happening.
Well, I appreciate your coming here to make us and the community as a whole aware.
I have taken care of some of your family members. Thank you.
Probably have, so, thank you.
You're welcome. No problem. But anyway, it is a problem, and they will gang stalk these other, I heard that the other nurses that had real nursing licenses had to go out of state to work. They had to go out of town to work. Well, we're from this community. Why should we get pushed out having the right credentials, letting other people work under our license? We have the credentials. We went through it. We went through the clinicals. We did all our learning and schooling and graduated and went through the, in class. We did all our learning and schooling and graduated and went through the NCLEX. So why should they benefit and harm others with our credentials?
Thank you for making us aware of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
She brings about something else that I was made aware of. There's probably not a new scam, but an old scam going around town currently. They're targeting businesses using, posing as their utility providers. There's several businesses in the last, I don't know, four, five, six weeks that came and let me know that there's a phone call that comes out to the business and tells them that their utility is going to be shut off if they don't pay within a certain amount of hours. And usually, somebody with no authority reception, secretary, somebody like that answers the phone, they're frantic, and they're running and attempting to try and pay the bill without really checking. And so that's going around quite rampantly. And I know in the past, we've sent out maybe notices through our, on the, is it the water bill that we put it on? So maybe, I don't know, if we can put a little alert on the water bill or something that we send out to let people know that that scam's going around pretty rampantly now. I think, I think somebody told me that one of the food trucks got even called on it, and the response from that business owner said they'll be there waiting for you to turn it off, because they're at a food truck. But nonetheless, this is happening, and so maybe we can just send out a little alert to let everybody know.
So would you look into that and consider that and work with Mr. Webster, see if you think that's appropriate?
Might be more of a press release than something on the utility bill.
I see, yes, okay.
I think that's, I know we've done something recently with our online bill pay portal, because people were getting some of the websites confused and going somewhere else to pay. So it's sort of similar to that, that, you know, our office will never call you to demand money, you know, or call you basically saying, we're going to shut your water off unless you pay right now. We typically put it in writing, give the customer notice, we follow a process. It's not anything we will ever call a customer and do that kind of activity. So it might, it might be more appropriate to do a press release.
Okay. Well, it's good that we had a conversation tonight, so the public watching knows that. Ms. Cresser.
We have a new alert system on our new website. Maybe we can test it.[1775.83]